Okay, we are called to order at. Six oh five and we have.
Mayor Price, city of Dallas. Lake Dallas.
I call the city of Lake Dallas to order. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Argonbach. From Shady Shore.
Mayor, you online with us? If not, I'll call the meeting to order on behalf of town of Shady Shores. Mike?
Here.
Jack?
Here.
Matthew, are you online with us? Charles, online? Okay, there's Cindy. Okay, she's.
I was having a hard time getting it to do something, so.
Okay, we've just about got it. If we're, we've got Matthew joining us, I believe. There's three of us in the room, so we've got quorum, so we're, we're good. If we get the other two, we'll acknowledge them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Workshop agenda, introduce and receive a report from the broadband task force. Mr. Ian Theodore, chairman of the, of the task force, and also, I believe he's a council member of the town of Hickory Creek. You have the floor.
I'll try to speak loudly. Just by way of introduction, the Lake Cities sit on the interstate highway between Dallas and Oklahoma City. Information superhighway also runs between Dallas and Oklahoma City right up the interstate. However, this area has no on or off ramps on that information superhighway. What we have to keep the road analogy are all farm-to-market roads. And unfortunately, that's insufficient in today's world. In 2021, and in the future, it's not sufficient. Some of our areas have only one internet service provider. Regardless of the provider, service has been substandard. Our residents suffer low speeds and frequent outages. The FCC designates this area as having as many as ten service providers. The data is not right. The way they count the data is if an internet service provider hits one resident in a census block, they get to claim the whole census block. So as a result, this area shows us having ninety-nine percent coverage on high-speed internet. What's high-speed internet? The FCC designates that as a minimum of twenty-five megabytes down, three megabytes up. And I'm sure that many of you know that that's not nearly sufficient in today's world. Some of us can't even get that. We're not rural. We get classified as an ex-bur. So we're not rural to qualify for a lot of the grants that the USDA grant gives to help rural areas get internet service. But we're not urban enough for the providers to consider us. We don't have the density. We don't have what they see as growth potential. And so basically, we're flyover country. So, this group, back in 2020, February twentieth to be exact, first discussed the idea of looking at broadband, and we spent 2020, we had one meeting, and we invited all of the providers, Century Tel, Grande, Spectrum. And we had one show up to our first meeting, and over at Shady Shores. And basically, we kind of talked about what we needed, what we wanted, and, and they said they would come back to us, which they never did. But from that meeting, we then started continuing to have discussions, and we actually talked about the demographics of our area. We talked about where the bad service was, which if you took the interstate, anything to the east of the interstate, bad service. And no potential hope of upgrades. Anything on the west side has some service, but bad service. We then learned of an organization called Connected Nation, because we were going to try to do our own GIS map and things like that. And we learned of Connected Nations, and with the help of our town managers, city managers, we engaged Connected Nation, and they spent the rest of 2020, twenty twenty-one, doing, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, doing studies. They did the survey, we did mapping. We invited providers to come back, and in January, we had our final draft report from Connected Nation, which we also invited the providers to come out, and we had three providers come out. And to accompany, they pretty much told our area that they had zero plans to do any kind of upgrades or expansions in this area. Subsequently, they did then said, well, if you have new stuff, we're willing to look at your new stuff, but we have no plans to do anything in the area. Then COVID happened. And what did that mean? We had sometimes two, three, four people trying to work from home. And that, as a committee, we realized that we were not getting any, any better. And so we started talking about what are some of the options. Our town staff and city staff has been extremely diligent at looking for solutions, and we've been working with them. And I think tonight, we're going to hear some potential solutions from what we have. But I'll just say this, the existing technology that's out there, even if they were to come and say, okay, we're going to give you some of the existing technology, it still wouldn't be sufficient. The FCC is considering moving the minimum standards from twenty-five to one hundred each way. That's what most homes need. I believe most of you, if you were to do a study on your home networks, you probably have between fifteen and twenty devices attached to your home network right now, between smart TVs, phones, Ring cameras, et cetera, et cetera. And it's just going to get worse. So, we've been looking at solutions. We believe that that solution is fiber-to-the-home. We believe that their solution is that the state will fund. As a matter of fact, this legislature, the state created an Office of Broadband Solutions that we feel will help advance broadband in this, well, across the state. And also, the federal government has been looking at how to increase the infrastructure as far as broadband goes. There's potential stimulus money, there's potential money from the state. And we believe that this area is ripe for fiber-to-the-home potential for us as a solution, and we'll hear more about that. Well, what I'll end with is by saying that the lack of comprehensive broadband is going to limit the lake cities. It's going to put us behind economically. It's going to put us behind quality of life. Recently, we're seeing studies where, where someone chooses to buy a home is being dictated by what kind of internet they have. Not water, not electricity, but internet. So we feel like that's going to put us behind our subdivisions, and others are going to get left behind when people start looking for better internet. We're also going to fall behind from a quality of life perspective. You know, if you have twenty or thirty devices, streaming TVs, et cetera, and you can't get good internet, you're not too happy. And so quality of life is going to be impacted here in the lake cities. So we're going to hear from our staff now on some of the specific initiatives. But in closing, I would like to note that our population is going to continue to grow based on the trends from 2010 to now. You know, we expect, I expect that we will be north, well north of fifty thousand people in the next ten years. And we're an expert. So as people migrate from the cities out, they want the things that the city has, but they want the quality of life that the ex-burbs have. And so we would be remiss in not paying attention to those types of things. So in closing, I'll say, they'll come for the lake, but they'll stay for the internet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from any of the council members? As it relates to this subject? Okay. Item number two, receive a staff report on current broadband efforts. Mighty Rivers, Mr. John Smith, city manager of town of Hickory Creek.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ian, for that report on that. So I'm going to report on Mighty River. If you recall, about sixty days ago, and thank you to each one of the councils who adopted that ILA with Mighty River. As you know, this broadband thing is, is branded to us, and for, for we city managers up here, this is, this is, it's a whole new realm. We don't know a whole lot about it. But we did know that we needed to find experts that were going to help us navigate what we needed to do, when we needed to do it, and so forth. So with Mighty River, which is a group out of North Carolina, we, we decided to go forward with a, the co-founder, which is Joe Fedesso. And Joe's going to help us walk through this, this whole broadband thing as far as the final mile, the beginning, whether or not we're going to do a public-private partnership, all those steps in between. And Joe was introduced to us by COG, with councils, council of governments and so forth. So he's, he's going to be a, a big player in helping us move forward on this. Joe's already started helping us out with questions to a, a local company. He's working with us with Spectrum already. He was on a call with us last week with Spectrum, because they're wanting to get back in and and start playing ball with us, because at first, they didn't want to do that. But now they're, they're stepping back up and saying, hey, we want to be involved. And their governmental affairs folks have come in and said, hey, we, we want to be in here. So Joe is helping us and steering us in that direction so that we know which way to go, because we, we don't want to make a, we don't want to make a mistake. And we want to take the, the road that, that's going to give exactly what Councilman Theodore said, better service at a better cost and get us there in the long run. This is for the four lake cities, which this is good, because you know, if you go back to last year's meeting, which is actually two years ago, this wasn't even on our agenda at the time. So this has come up since then, and it's become a very hot topic. And that's why we put it at the forefront of what we've been doing. It's almost what we do at every meeting. We go over broadband first and what we're doing on this. So I started going through and just kind of looking at, you know, the five whys, where we need it, Mighty River, and, and so forth. One is investment expectations, because i- if we move forward, we're talking about a substantial amount of taxpayer money that we're going to move this project forward with. Investment in the last mile, where are we going to end up, you know, down the road ten years from now? Because we're making decisions that are going to impact the communities. And then the next step's where we need to go. And I'm going to end this piece. This was just a short segment on an email I just got from a citizen, and this kind of explains it all. And she has no idea that we're even talking broadband or anything. She says, hello, John, I need to let you know that our, I'll just say provider, I won't say the name, for the internet and TV is poor at times. Understand there, we are in the dead zone where no company cares, beginning with Lake Dallas Telephone, which is Century Tel. When I first moved here in nineteen eighty-three, I thought homeschooling was a problem for dropped services past year, but I was dropped three times during our Zoom training meeting last week. It usually happens around one to two in the afternoon, and again, six PM. Last night, I won't say his name, was trying to stream ESPN three to watch a game, as, as Ian had talked about, all the different things that we do nowadays, even down to the TV piece. The helper proof service in the air would really appreciate it. Last week, I had a company call come out and check the service and found that it was a temporary cable across the alley that had split. So even down to just cables laying across the alley to get service to people is unacceptable. And that, that's not where we want to go. It had been there for at least a year or two, and said that it should have been trashed under the alley within a couple of weeks. And then I won't go from there, but all I know is when I sent this email to the, the folks that needed to see it, I, I got a, an answer within four hours, and they had somebody out there, which they didn't get that kind of service before. But I think because we've initiated this broadband, and they know where we're going, where we're trying to get, all of a sudden, we've got their attention. So, any questions about Mighty River and why we brought those folks in?
Any question from councils? Okay. No, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Marketplace dot city, Mr. Bob Hart, city manager of city of Corinth.
One of the elements that, that we're always struggling with is what options are actually available in terms of internet providers. Marketplace dot city is a Chicago-based company that works with both private companies and local government across the US dealing with technology-related issues. And, and so we have, we're, we have met with them and are in the early stages of working with them to put out a, what I'm going to refer to as a, in our vernacular, the, the general request for proposals to potential internet providers across the country. They have a, this is, this is still obviously brand new and what's going on in the country, but they have already started doing similar kind of processes in a couple of metropolitan areas in other states. So we have talked to them about doing this for our particular area. And it's, we're in the process now of preparing the RFP, so we can put that out on a national search. They will help us on the evaluation and the selection process. And then, as, as John referenced, we'll come back and use Joe Fedesso and Mighty Rivers to help us with the finalization of all of that work. But Marketplace City is to help us to identify potential of internet providers that, that, that would be available and competitive within this area. And so I could, I'm glad to answer any questions on that. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item three, receive and discuss a report on the digital-ready community efforts. This is Wendy Withers, Shady Shores Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the other activities we've been participating in is looking at becoming a digital-ready community. A digital-ready community guides community stakeholders, local champions, including local governments, to help our communities leverage what digital platforms we have available to us to increase civic engagement and trust among citizens with their government, as well as become more responsive to their needs. Some of the goals that we've established in our meetings are to earn community trust and convey benefits of heavy, becoming a digital-ready city, excuse me. Establishing a digital asset group, which would be a group of stakeholders and local governments that work together to get important factual information out to our residents. Assess our current online presence and our overall reputation amongst our residents. Discuss the importance of our online presence, etiquette and legal considerations, and to design and implement a community-wide digital engagement plan. There's going to be a community survey launched the week of June fourteenth, so that's Monday. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, we decided to launch that on the Chambers website, the link, or we?
Yes.
So residents will go to the Lake Cities Chamber website to fill out this survey. And some of the things that they'll be answering questions on are network connections, our representation to the residents. How aware are they of issues that are going on in the community, trust and social? Once that survey is complete, we expect to review the results in late August and create a digital asset group that will work together to disseminate information when necessary and for the benefit of the public, and will be designing and implementing a community-wide digital engagement plan. And thank you to Leanne, who prepared that PowerPoint. I won't take credit for that.
Are there any questions on, on this item? Okay. Next item is to receive and discuss a report on emergency planning efforts. Mr. Chad Thompson, our, he's assistant fire chief of the Lake Cities Fire Department.
Good evening, everybody. Do I need the? Is that up there? The PowerPoint changer.
I think I've got it, so. Good evening, everybody. Since we're in the Emergency Operations Center, we thought it would be a good idea to give you a review of, of this room and the building, as well as kind of a report over what, what is the Emergency Operations Center. It's not something that we use, but it's something we hope we never use, but it's not something we use very often. So we're going to go over our algorithms, our threat level conditions. I'm not going to read, read verbatim here, but just talk a lot about what the EOC, how we set it up, what people would need to report, and what the function of it is. Here's our algorithm, and Brenton, if you can hear me, can you move the? I don't know if you can move that or not. Okay, well. Basically, when we get an incident, what this is saying is, is that we have to decide whether we can handle that incident locally. And when I say locally, sometimes that involves mutual aid companies. If you've ever seen Little Elm or Denton or Lewisville here, helping us with a call, that, that happens. I don't want to say daily, but it, it happens weekly, as well as we are going to those communities to help out. It's just, it's, it's just what we do. And we handle those calls, like I said, ninety-nine percent of the time. However, sometimes that incident gets over, we, we get overwhelmed. And so the way that that has to be handled is we have to go to the local mayor. In the government code, the local mayor is actually the emergency management professional or emergency management boss, if you will. And so we have to go through the mayor in order to get to the county to get those assets. And so if we needed to, I would, or anybody in the EOC would report to their mayor and ask for that help through Andy Eads, who it is today as the county commissioner. And then he would give us what we need. And, and again, if, if it overwhelms even the county, then Andy Eads would petition the state, and we would get help there. That has to flow that way, and that's according to the government code, so. Our threat level conditions and why we would need to set up and get into the EOC. If you look at the first one there, the four is normal operations. That's basically today. And again, ninety percent of the days that we have is, is a normal operations. But we are monitoring. And then increased readiness at the level three. Usually, April and May, you see the storms, and we're, we're getting the, the news, and we're getting all the hits on our phones, saying that we got storms coming in. That kind of pushes us locally up into that level three where we're monitoring. It used to force us to immediately come in because of the sirens. We'd have to potentially set the sirens off. You guys approved us to get those sirens upgraded. And when we did, it allowed for that to happen as the polygon hits, the tornado warning polygon hits those sirens. It's automated. It's automatic. So I don't have to get up at two in the morning and try to make it here during a hailstorm or during a tornado warning. And so, thank you. That, that is, was a, was a great, made my day, actually. So when we get to the level two, the high, high readiness, and, and even the level one, that's when a lot of phone calls are being made. We have a book. I say a book. It's a, it's a small pamphlet, if you will, that has numbers that, that I need to call, or whoever's in the EOC, to get those people to get up here and start formulating the Emergency Operations Center. One of the first calls is Brenton, who, who's in the background today. And that's because he and Sasar will get here probably first and really start getting our IT stuff going, which is really important. And we've got a, a great generator here that keeps everything going, so that we'll have that, that availability. The activation policy, so any town, and I should have started by telling you guys that any disaster, any incident that we have, it doesn't matter which city it's in, it doesn't matter or town, or how many city or towns it's in, this is the place we'd want to meet for the Emergency Operations Center. And so really, I live in Hickory Creek now, and so if the town of Hickory Creek gets hit, and it's only the town of Hickory Creek, of course, I'm going to want to come to work, because that's where I live. But we would want to come anyway, because I know it's not Corinth that, that has the issue, but we're still going to come to this building. This is the place that we want to initiate that work. You might be saying, well, what happens if this building gets hit? Well, the backup right now is the old EOC room at the, at the town, or the city of Corinth. It's a hardened room. It's about as big as the area from where you guys are, but it does have some availability for some IT stuff, and it is, it is hardened. As we, you know, we could go three or four deep. I don't have, I'm not that good. So we just hope that the, the weather and the tornadoes don't, don't start tearing stuff up too much. But this is where we want to meet, and I'm going to show you some pictures here in a minute of how we would lay that out. But you can see that any town or city within the lake cities can request that we open this. They need to declare a local emergency, and that's how that first algorithm would get going. And then at the request of the emergency management coordinator, usually that comes in conjunction with the police or fire chief, depending upon the incident, or the city manager or town managers. That's, that's how that's normally going to come. If, and the, the last one is just really describing, if we're receiving resources from outside of our boundaries, we should be in an EOC operation. If, if we're getting a lot of help from outside, we ought to be already headed that way. Again, here is a, the organizational chart, and I'm not too tech savvy, so the, it should be a dotted line from where it says Unified Command. Above that should be dotted lines. Thanks, Brenton. Because it, it's not, it's not really portraying that the city council is in charge of the, of the operations center. Y'all are in charge of, of the city, no doubt. But what's going on here is that the Unified Command is going to be running the EOC. And then from there, you've got the Public Information Officer, the Emergency Management Coordinator, which is going to be the person kind of running the show inside of here. And then you can see how it breaks down into your normal operations, planning and finance. And then underneath that, those are how that's broken down even more. A lot of times, a city manager or town manager will be a focal point inside of the Emergency Operations Center, kind of giving us our, our, our work, and may even be the IC, the Incident Commander. But that's the reason why we have Unified Command in there, is because a lot of times, it could be multiple towns or cities. And so we need all of the stakeholders in here, which could include Encore or Atmos, for sure, our school districts, the county. So there's a lot of stakeholders that it could involve. Here is, and I'm sorry it's hard to read, but this is the whole building. And the purpose of this slide really is to show you that we're not just using this room, but we are using the entire building in those shaded areas. We're up in the upper right-hand portion of that this, this picture now, but you can see all over the building, these shaded areas. Not going to really go into detail on every one of these rooms. But I will say the furthest blue over lower left, the furthest we could get is where the mayors are. Not because we want them the furthest away, but it was a big enough room where it had some IT stuff in it, and we could get them to work. The city councils themselves will not meet here. It will be probably a Zoom or, you know, I guess Teams meeting or something like that, where we would get with y'all and meet, and the mayors could, could enact any ordinances that we needed to do from there. Here is our room, and I do want to show you a little bit about this. This is the, the table y'all are at on the right, where it says Emergency Operations Center. And again, it's hard to read, but you can see where it says Fire, Police, Public Works, LC MUA. The reason why they're on that side of the room, which is where Shady Shores is sitting right now, is because those closets over there, the first two are set up with radios for us to talk to our folks out, out and about. And they're also have computers that we can get on, especially with GIS, and start getting our maps going. The county and school is, is where the, currently where the, the town and the city managers are. And then where Corinth and Hickory Creek are, are our normal functioning, planning, logistics and finance. And then up over here where Hickory Creek and Lake Dallas are. I can't even read that myself. Oh, the Incident Commander and, oh, and the managers are going to be, so y'all would have to be over here in, in that case. So again, this is pretty fluid. It could be changed with, with really just us talking about it. If we wanted to move something around, it's very fluid. One of the things we learned about the EOC is that this door right here is the main entry, and it is not good for the main entry of the Emergency Operations Center. It really needs to be that door and that entry over there, so that we can have a security officer here vetting who's coming in here. And it, and it can become a train wreck if you're just allowing people in and out. And so we've learned that, and so we made that, that change as well here. I don't know, last month or so. Here are some of the representatives that we would expect to come from your town or city. Obviously, the town manager, city managers, the fire and police will be here. Finance directors, anybody in public works, planning, radio room operator, that's going to be kind of Brenton and his group. And then LC MUA, if we, if we need them. Again, we may not need all the towns or cities, but it, we expect, we expect it would be if it was a, a big enough deal. Some of the roles and responsibilities that would, that would come into play are the EOC manager. Usually, that's, could be the police chief or the fire chief. That's somebody that's just making the EOC function correctly. They're not really participating in finance or planning or logistics. They're making sure this room is doing what it needs to be doing. If it's making sure it's not getting out of hand, make sure the meetings are starting on time and doing that. Uh, if it's making sure it's not getting out of hand, make sure the meetings are starting on time and, and doing that. The finding, plannings, planning, logistics and operations, uh, those are the, that this is pretty simple. We want your planning or finance or logistics type people in those roles. We don't want, uh, you know, you don't want me in finance because it, it would become a train wreck. You don't want, uh, you know, my boss is here. You don't want him, uh, in as a P I O. He's not, no, he's, he's actually really good on camera. But, uh, you can see what I mean. You want, you want people that know what they're doing day in and day out in those roles. And it makes, uh, makes it function a whole lot, whole lot better. Again, it's fluid. There are a lot of planning people that are very talented. Uh, and they can work in logistics, uh, as, as well as finance. So it, it could be, uh, fluid and, uh, with that as well. All right. So what's the function of the E O C? It just provides a central, uh, focus of authority and information and allows face-to-face coordination, uh, regarding priorities and the use of resources. So it's just an, a way for us to be together in a room and make sure we're doing the right things, the best way for our citizens. Receive and disseminate warnings. I'm not going to read everyone, but you can see some of the important ones. The maintain current maps. We have, uh, a G I S department that is phenomenal and, uh, helps out with making, maps of destruction, uh, or if we have a destructed neighborhood, it's very hard to tell where things should be. So we have a map of what it did look like. And then it helps us navigate where we're at. Uh, and then, uh, control and coordinate the operations and logistical support resources. It's really, you just don't think about all the things that are, uh, need like porta potties for the people that are just in here because the bathrooms aren't working or whatever. You just, there's a lot of things to think about. Food, that's on top of my list is, is food. So, uh, a lot of things go on. Any questions over the emergency operations center? Uh, again, if you ever want to take a tour, I'm glad to do it. I've taken them, the town managers and the mayors on a tour. And if any of you would like a tour, just to see what things would look like, I'm glad to do it.
Are there any questions for? Just. Another subject?
I'll ask one. Um, what's the level of coordination from a radio system and interoperability and things like that?
Well, we're on the Denton County, uh, system for police and fire. And then we do have the availability to go to some regional channels or some Nix, Nipsec. I know Mr. Gordon knows I'm talking about, uh, channels. Uh, we can go direct or indirect on those, uh, depending upon if the repeater's up or not. But we have, uh, even a local, uh, our three hundred system, um, that is our, it's actually the old Lake Dallas system, uh, that we have our sirens on. Um, and we had it back when we, uh, back in the early nineties and we were fired. We just have maintained that system. Uh, it's a little, it's not as robust as your eight hundred or, or digital system. But if that system goes down, uh, then we do have that backup capability. And we currently use those radios to do, uh, public events. So it is, it is used. So, um, radios are pretty good. Cell phone, it just really depends on tower and, uh, what kind of destruction is going on there. We do have, uh, public safety phones that should be, uh, priority prioritized. But, um, you still could get some busy signals with phones. And so, um, that's why being here face-to-face is, is really important.
Does the E O C turn on during the last ice storm?
Yes. Yeah. When, when, uh, Mr. Hart opened the E O C when we, uh, ran out of, where power was lost, uh, to our, uh, didn't have water. So, yes. And he can probably speak more to that. Uh, I don't know if you need to, but yeah, that's, yes, ma'am.
I have to. How will you determine the E O C manager if it will be police or fire?
Like it, it really depends on the incident. And it's a really good question too, because I always like to use tornado, uh, because that's our biggest threat. The, the tornado, the, the initial, I'd say twenty-four, if you're pushing it forty-eight hours is a heavy response, uh, portion of that. And that's, that's heavy fire rescue and police. But after that forty-eight hour, maybe not, maybe not even that, maybe twenty-four hours, it really becomes a recovery. And it becomes a heavy public works event. So you could transition your E O C manager and even your incident commander from being somebody in the fire police over to, uh, Glenn's here, uh, could be for sure, public works, could be L C M U A with Mike Fairfield. Uh, could be, uh, Jeff McSped. And I mean, it could be any of those people that are in, in, uh, public works, but it, it could actually transition, uh, within operational periods. Operational periods are usually about twelve-hour working periods. And so that, that twelve-hour period, they would probably be planning the next one and deciding, okay, we need to transition to recovery. And it may be that Glenn becomes, uh, now the manager. And Chief Ross is going home.
So will this presentation be on the city website or will we be able to get it or how will we be able to have something?
We could. We were, we were.
You're talking about this, this particular? Yeah, it's easily.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
A quick question. Um, you, you laid out the org chart of, of, uh, the, the individuals that was, uh, uh, would be involved in the operations center here. At what point or do you have a county liaison, uh, where their frontline know what their, what resources are needed?
Well, it's a good question. The county, you talked, you said county, correct?
Yes.
Depending upon the disaster, if it's local and focused on the lake cities, it wouldn't be an issue to get them pretty quick. But if it's more of a widespread, um, Denton County issue, they're probably going to be tied up and we may not get the liaison. During the ice storm, we, we, we were able to get a county person here, uh, and they were, uh, very helpful in getting, uh, generators, helping us find generators for these, uh, uh, this, our water issue for, for the pumps. So, so it really depends on the disaster and how widespread it is. Uh, our, our emergency management plan for all four of the lake cities is the county plan with their annexes. So, uh, we're going to be, uh, using that as our, um, foundation to run the E O C. Uh, but getting the actual representative here really is just going to depend. If, I would say if we, if it's local, well, it'd be, we'll have them here.
Okay.
All right. Uh, just dropping back real quick to the radio communications. Are you guys part of FirstNet?
Uh, you're talking about the A T and T system. I don't think we are.
Yeah, no.
Or, or police wise, we go, we go, no.
Okay. And then the next one is I noticed, uh, of all of the, uh, agencies or stakeholders, I didn't see the school district in the emergency plan.
They're on the, they're, they're on the seating area. I don't know which way I'm going here. They're on that one. Uh, they're one of our stakeholders. And a- again, it's gonna, just to be dependent on the incident, whether we're actually going to need the school here or not. Uh, if it's affecting kids in any way, uh, then we're going to have them, um, whether, wh- e- either call in or, or zoom in or have them physically here.
Cause I know they have a, a flow chart and emergency plan for notification, school access, et cetera.
Yes, sir.
Would make sense to have them in the flow chart as well. And then from the, the other point for them was if we have a, an event where we need to create shelters, do we have that in place?
We, we have, we were lucky enough to find, uh, two shelters on the last event in the, uh, for the, uh, ice storm. Uh, both of them were churches. Uh, but the problem is depending upon the, I always say depending upon the incident. And the reason why is because, uh, one of the shelters was Global Spheres Church, which is huge, which is a, a phenomenal asset. They do a lot for the, not just Corinth, but for the lake cities. And they were willing to stand up. And they did, but then they lost electricity. And so they weren't able to be a shelter. The other issue with shelter is, is because of A D A, you really have to make sure that you're A D A compliant at your shelters. And that, uh, most of the time the Red Cross runs those shelters and their people, they want their people there running them. And so you have, you might have experts at Global Spheres that know their facility, but yet Red, uh, Red Cross wants to be there. So it gets a little, a little, uh, dicey there. Uh, Lakeshore Baptist Church was the other one, uh, and First Baptist Corinth, First Baptist Corinth also ran out of water and power. And so they had to shut down. Uh, for some reason Lakeshore Baptist Church in Lake Dallas on Hunley Drive, uh, stayed open for about four days. Uh, and they, uh, ran a twenty-four operation, a twenty-four seven operation, which, uh, they were, uh, deemed a warming center, which is not a shelter. Uh, so they were only supposed to be open, uh, during the day, just to have people come in and warm up. But they chose to stay open for that twenty-four hours, uh, and be actually a, a shelter. So, to my knowledge, we don't have any Red Cross shelters in our area. City Hall in Lake Dallas used to be certified as a, a Red Cross shelter, but that was many years ago. Again, it's dependent upon showers and, uh, and they have to have so many square foot per person. And they really need to come in and evaluate whichever building we want to become a shelter.
One other thing that I didn't see on the global seating chart, and I don't know, would a chaplain be someone that we would find necessary for that? In, in my thought it would be, but I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. We have our own chaplain at the fire department as well as the, the police department has a chaplain. They call in for local incidents. And I would assume that the chaplain marketplace would, would be willing to come in and, and, um, and help us out. Yeah, that's a great, great idea.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I don't find, uh, five is receive and discuss data-driven approaches to crime and traffic safety. That, 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 uh, policy files that first, uh, that focuses on quality and life issues. Mr. Mike Wilson, who's interim city manager of city of Lake Dallas, or city of Lake Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all the mayors, council members and aldermen for, uh, being here to, tonight. As we've all seen, uh, through the pandemic and through, uh, the things that have happened, uh, just over the last year, society has shifted. You know, there's been a paradigm shift and we're dealing with some challenges that we didn't deal with before. Uh, the most prevalent being, uh, the impact of mental health on society as a whole. About a year ago Kaiser, and this is pretty early in the pandemic, reported through their study that fifty percent of, uh, Americans were, had been neg- uh, impacted in a negative way as it relates to mental health, just as a direct result of, uh, COVID. And then you add to it some of the events that have caused the civil unrest that were, that we're seeing across the country and we're still seeing it. And we're still seeing more and more events compound coupled with the rises and demand for police services and the violent acts that we're seeing across the country. Uh, as of May, mass shootings were up, uh, eighty-two percent in the U S, uh, for twenty twenty-one as compared to the previous year. Locally, we've seen, um, high number of, uh, fatality accidents on I thirty-five. We've seen different, uh, type of, uh, criminal events increasing in our respective co- communities. All while we're dealing with the financial impacts of a winter storm and, uh, COVID. It's not going to change. Now, short of, uh, uh, respective cities or agencies conducting workload analysis to identify, uh, demand needs as it relates to police services and/or fire ser- services in our respective community. We typically respond as we always have, and it's in a geographic form based off of statistics. What we're going to talk about tonight is the data-driven approach to crime and traffic safety. It's an operational model, uh, that's supported in partnership by NITSA as well as several other major national law enforcement agencies. By effectively using, we call it D Dax model, it has a potential to build or rebuild vital community partnerships and establish public trust, which we would probably all agree, that our law enforcement community nationwide has some work to do to recover from incidents like, uh, George Floyd. The model's focused on the collaboration of law enforcement with citizens, communities, businesses and community organizations reinforce a crucial role that partnerships play in reducing social harm and improving quality of, of life. So we're effectively, as a nation, there's a crisis. We've seen a significant shift in human behavior that's impacting quality of life in every community in the United States, either directly or indirectly. And that's what you're seeing as a result or a lot of bad things happening. A neighboring community had three police officers shot here recently in Flowerman. We've had police departments experience drive-by shootings. We're seeing crime increase. We're seeing traffic collisions and increase in the state of Texas. And there's a lot of police officers out there writing tickets. And there's a lot of police officers out there arresting people. So if we rest on the traditional notion that if we write tickets and we arrest people that crime and crashes are going to stop, then I think we've proven that not to be the case because it's still an upward trend. I would like to introduce to you tonight, Dan Howard with Iatalist. Uh, Dan comes to us from New Jersey. We don't hold that against him. He's, uh, spent a lot of time in Texas. I met Dan about five years ago, whenever I brought this program into Keller, working in a regional format with our partnering cities. And what we found was staggering. Number one was the amount of money we were spending per incident occurring in our communities. And for every dollar, that's an impact to our residents, to our taxpayers. And by engaging this process, we saw how we could reduce that and we could reduce that financial, uh, footprint. So Dan, if you'll go and, uh, come on to the front, you're a very important man. So this is Dan Howard with Iatalist and he works in conjunction, um, with all of these other organizations for.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I really appreciate being here. It's, um, it's the first time we've done this in front of city councils. We've talked to county commissioners in the past about this and obviously law enforcement. But it's something I really truly believe in. Um, as Mike alluded to, I am prior law enforcement from New Jersey, South Jersey, uh, which is otherwise known as the fifty-first state. I see, I keep running people from Jersey all over Texas. Joke is everybody wants to be from New Jersey. Nobody wants to be in New Jersey. I've been involved in this project, uh, the Texas project we're going to talk about in a minute, since, uh, October two thousand and fifteen. I've been involved in the national D Dax project since two thousand and eleven, since I brought it to Mount Laurel, uh, which is right across from Philadelphia and just north of Camden, if you've heard of that. Um, I was sprinting there, went down to the shore right after Hurricane Sandy hit the, the eastern shore of New Jersey. And I was a public safety director. So I have police, fire, U M S, beach patrol and whatever else the city manager could put on top of me, but that's what we had. We brought there as well. I've had the benefit. And I'm very fortunate to have gone around the country. I think I've been to twenty-six or twenty-seven states now. And what we talk about in the workshops is not something that I came up with. It's, a lot of it is a feedback from the police departments and many cases, the fire departments that we talk about. From traffic engineers, from, uh, D O Ts, county engineers and so forth. So all these things come into this presentation. So what we're going to talk about, data-driven approaches. Data-driven approaches, I'm sorry. Data-driven approaches. And the four Ds of a data-driven operation is very simply first need data. And we always talk about, are you going to do anything in the world without having data? And when I talk to police departments, I ask them, tell me one thing you do that doesn't, isn't based on data. How much gas you need for next year? How many uniforms? How many bullets? How many personnel you need five years from now? It's the same thing with the highway department. How much asphalt we need to replace the asphalt, uh, public works, fire department, so forth. So everything is based in data. And very simply, data is just information. It could come from the citizens, it come from city councils, it can come from the line officers, whoever it's going to be. So you have to have good quality data. And we have a lot of discussions about the, the quality of data in many cases or the, um, lack of quality in many cases. It's a generic problem across the country. It's not something that is unique to any one department. I have yet to be a department yet that doesn't have some issue with data quality. And it's not because they're deliberately messing it up. It's because they don't realize what's going on and what the need of it is. I always ask officers, if you were to say, I'm going to do this crash report today, and you're writing it for something that's looked at three to five years from now, because that's what it's going to be. They would tell you, never thought of it that way. Many cases, police commanders don't think of it that way. So that's how this whole project has evolved, but you need to have dedication as well. Mike alluded to, um, quality of life issues. We always talk about this is a long-term solutions for long-term problems. You're not going to turn a cruise ship on a dime. So you're not going to sit there and whatever social harms affecting your community to be able to sit there and stop it immediately. Because if you could have done that, you'd have done a long time ago. So it's a dedicated approach. It's, uh, continuously evaluating your progress. It's about not starting something and then just resting on your laurels. It's a question of being able to look at it, say it's working, it's not working, and then we go from there. Disruption is you have to be able to disrupt people's dr- bad driving behavior, criminal behavior and whatever social harm is impacting. And then the last but not least is displacement. I always joke about sending it back to New Jersey where it came from, more than likely. But at some point in time, you're going to push things down the road. And what we have been trying to talk about for the last several years around the country is a regional approach. But, uh, intriguing so much about this whole thing is how close y'all work together anyway. It's almost like a non. It's almost like a non established regional approach. Because we're talking to police departments yesterday, and everybody works so well together anyway, it's almost like there's no boundaries. So you're already doing something like that without realizing even doing it. But we talk about partnering with county sheriffs, with DPS, with county engineers, DOT, all partners and stakeholders, law enforcement and law enforcement. So again, we talk about data. Very simply, as I mentioned, it's non law enforcement solutions to law enforcement problems. What is it about that particular area or areas that's attracting bad drug behavior? Criminal behavior, whatever it is, is it apartment complex where the parking lot lights are out? Is it a traffic signal where changes from red to green or green to red like that? It's not cycling properly. Is the speed limit too high or potholes in the road? What is it about that location? And what an analyst does is to determine what the causal factors are for that. I always joke about, you can teach me to put dots on a map. You can teach me to make a map of a really pretty map. But the problem is, that doesn't tell you why it's happening. And it doesn't always tell you when it's happening. Is that, is this intersection a problem twenty-four seven, all day long, three sixty-five a year? Or is it just between four and six? So is the police department going to put the resources out here just for four to five and then put them over here, eleven to twelve? Whatever your data tells you to do. That's what the basis of a data driven operational model is all about. So we talk about non law enforcement solutions. If you look at this, and of course, we won't do it. This was a true story. This town, but it was a big, not this map, but there's a big shopping center and residential area at the top left corner. The town put a huge high school across the street from that. So when the kids got out for lunch, instead of going to traffic signal, they'd run across the five lane road. Cars be ducking and dodging, crashing each other, call the police, it had caused a lot of problems with the police department. Same thing when the police officers go there, and if we're shopping, whatever have you, the kids would run back across the road. And they all stay, it just be mayhem. They actually put a jersey barrier, concrete barrier, the fence down the middle of the road, so it forced everybody to go to the intersection. It cut down the traffic crashes dramatically. They certainly couldn't happen to cross with the light, but they had to cross at the intersection. So it was some controlled access egress, if you will, was a non law enforcement solution. Another example we always talk about is the department, it's a big shopping center. The analysts in the police department plotted the points of impact. And they realized that the points of impact were not the intersection, but coming into and out of the intersection. More importantly, they realized that thirty-eight percent of our killed in serious injury crashes happened here as people making a legal left turn into a shopping center. And we always talk about possible solutions. You can put a traffic signal, which costs money. You could put a concrete barrier, which costs money. This department put a no left turn sign for fifty dollars, and it stopped their killing serious injury crashes by almost thirty-eight percent by a traffic sign. Sometimes a solution is that simple. They wrote hundreds of tickets there. And every time they leave, somebody would turn across to an into traffic and get T-bone. They called the police back, they sit there and write tickets, they go away, somebody turn and get crashed, and it just kept, that cycle kept going on for years and years. You're never, as I think Mike alluded to, a police department is never going to write enough tickets in of itself to reduce crashes, because if that was the case, all the click it and ticket grants that the DOT comes out with and traffic highway safety comes out with, and all the speed grants, the thousands, tens of thousands of tickets, we'd have reduced crashes a long time ago. But Texas crashes across the country are going up, not going down. So the question is, how do you attack the problem? If you can lock up every single bad person in the county, where would you put them at? The jails can't take them, jails are full, whatever have you. So it's a question of dealing with solutions, which is where the community and the partnerships and the holistic approach comes in at. And that's what this is all about. So again, why the dots appear in a map? So again, as I alluded to, in order to have a data driven operation, you have to have data. You have to have data quality, you have to have data collection. You have to have the mechanisms which to collect it. Again, we get locked into as police officers, we get locked into our records management system, which is, that's an important component. But we also lose sight of the fact that the officers have input who are on the street. We also lose sight of the community, businesses, clergy, homeless people. These are all people that have input or have valuable knowledge if we take the time to collect it. Some of the more common things is most chronic, believe it or not, occurs at a police station. Why? Because it's the way it's recorded. It's the location of the caller, not the location of the offense. Nobody thinks to to change it, it just gets missed, and that it's a commonly problem across the country, major highways. This is FM thirty-six oh two, and you changed to Dan Howard Memorial Parkway. Did everybody else change your systems to reflect the name change? Generally, no. So every time somebody's putting Dan Howard Memorial Parkway, there's no such street, it doesn't plot on the map. These are common things that people, to include myself, really never thought about. Missing data, duplicate master data, a ten, nine digits in the phone number instead of ten, misspelling of a witness name or victim's name, things that create problems. It would be the same thing with Public Works or anybody else who uses information. You look at, I mean, a couple of roads in Texas have multiple different names. I've seen that. Okay, you have that problem often. We had it back home. We had State Highway seventy-three was in our system nine different ways. We work with the police department in Texas that a big hospital complex, the hospital complex was in their RMS system four hundred and fifty-two different ways. You had to sit there and think of every possible combination, helipad, ER, MRI center, operating room, left side parking lot, north parking lot roof, every possible way of combinations, four hundred and fifty-two different combinations. It, because we don't really think about the data collection portion of it and how important it is. I was listening to the chief's thing about merge operations. It's the same thing. All that's based in data. You'd look at things and you you make decisions based on that data. So to give you an idea, you have to use the right data. This is, this is daytime crash and crime. The red is crashes and the blue circles are, I'm sorry, crashes. So you've overlaid crashes and crime together. So this is a daytime map. So you will look at this map and you put your officers where the bright spots are. Common sense, right? Now, if you look at this as a twenty-four seven, three sixty-five map, until you look at nighttime, and you realize how much it changes. That's why the data is important. It's not a question, just simply looking at this day or that day. It's like comparing May of twenty nineteen to May of twenty twenty. There's going to be some differences. You've joked about just taking twenty twenty right out of the equation because it's so skewed. It just messes everything up. There's ways to account for that. But if you look at, that's how much it changes. It goes, it goes from that in daytime to that. If you look at this one, if you look up, this happens to be a courthouse. This is actually weather for it to be. This is a courthouse. If you look at the wintertime versus the springtime, all this shows up in the springtime. So weather for it adjusts their manpower or staffing to go down to here to address these areas, which are not there in the wintertime. It's not meant to be bang the square pegged around hole. It's been using your specific data for your specific problems. When you look at this one, I don't think anybody would disagree that if I gave this map to anybody, you put your police officers here, here, and they're on three dots. Until you take shoplifting out of the equation and then it changes it completely. That's how much looking at the right data matters. It would change it that much if they had you all with this map. They would have missed all of this and all of that just by taking shoplifting out. We talk about, we talk directed patrols, we talk about crash reduction. And we talk about writing speeding tickets, for instance. And one of the things is National Traffic Highway Safety, NHTSA in Washington DC, has five categories. They look at speed related crashes, intersection related crashes, DUI drunk driving crashes, commercial motor vehicles, large trucks, and seat belts. So most crashes fit in those five categories. Overwhelmingly in Texas and across the country, and I've seen, but definitely in Texas, the overwhelming majority of crashes are, what would you think, sir? Speed?
Seat belts.
Seat belts, sir?
Speed.
Speed. Right, speed, that's your, but it's not.
Alcohol.
It's intersection related crashes. So you ask yourself, why don't most tickets around the country, not just Texas, are speed related crashes, speed related tickets? It's not a question of officers not working hard, it's a question, do they know what factors are causing the crashes? And that's what the ticket, that's what the key is. So you can target your causal factors for your crashes. I'm not suggesting you don't write speeding tickets, because speeding is a significant problem. But if you had to pick between the two, and sixty percent of your crashes are intersection related, and twenty percent of your crashes are speed related, and you have limited resources, where would you put them? Intersectionally crashes. So you look at this, and what they use with crash reports is cause factors and contributing factors in the crash report. And they start identifying texting and distracted driving. So I'm looking at shopping centers, you start looking at construction zones, little U-turns, maybe some drag racing, kids getting in the pickup trucks for graduation and speeding out the road. Importantly configured highways, we get the yellow text dot for that. And the last thing is just random stuff. It's the stuff that you just happens. It's that guy from New Jersey who can't keep up with speeds in Texas. Because clearly, speed laws for you are mere recommendations. The fastest we can go is sixty-five in Jersey, that's a Jersey turn clock. That's like a school zone for you guys. So you look at it, and then what this allows, this data allows the department to do very simply is attack specific things. Yeah. So as they start identifying it, they're going to come up with a strategy for distracted driving. They'll come up with a strategy for maybe turns into a shopping center, little U-turns, drag racing, the kids in the high schools, speeding out in the high schools, one and all friends work with text dot county engineers. At the end of the day, they actually got lower than they thought they would this target by having a directed approach to causal factors for the crashes, which has been some of the, the continuation around the country about policing and how traffic, of course, was. So we're talking about a call, we're talking about a specific directed to identify the unique issues. It's the same thing with crime. It's panhandling, drunks at nighttime, smashing grab burglaries, bar fights, car thefts, and then the random things. If you can identify what it is. We always talk about DUI and a lot of drunk driving if ours close. But we asked departments, what would you do to target that? Well, we have, we have patrols, we have extra DUI patrols. And I ask them is, how about parking enforcement? How about the fire marshal enforce the fire code? How about handicap park and fires no parking and keep the crowds to manageable level? You don't have four hundred people in a building that's meant for one hundred. Code enforcement, these are all non law enforcement solutions that can be used to target, in that case, drunk driving. Is it, you have a Walmart or a Target or something, or an apartment complex that has all the parking lot lights out? Or a street that has all the parking, the street lights out? Does anybody bother to report the street lights out? Darkness breeds crime. It's a well known fact. So these are non law enforcement solutions. So again, reducing crime and crashes, social harms. Social harm is important, remember, because it's what's unique to your community. If it's South Dallas is drive by shootings, I'm guessing it's not the same in Lake Dallas. Lake Dallas's social harm may be, I don't know, literally, just making up something. You know, current of maybe drive by shootings. So what one town's going to address is not the same as the other. It's again, this is not a question of beating a square peg in a hole. This model isn't designed to meet your community's needs. Some examples, Texas, I asked the analysts to give me all the crashes and crime and the car stops for three years. And I asked them what all these car stops were up here. I said, give me three years from March of July. The police officers all leave for supervisors, mainly leave for, and said, that's our school zone. The chief, the mayor would have our ass as if we didn't force the school zone. Fair enough. But it's July. There's no school in July, which means there's no school zone in July, which means there's nothing to enforce. Collectively, lean back and said, oh, yeah, it's a question of for twenty-five years, thirty years, you go out and do the same thing every day. My question to them is, if the purpose of that is determined, which is what it is, you see a police car, you don't speed through a school zone. But do you know when the police officer is going to be there? And that's when the question comes in at, is it have to be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Could it be Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday? Maybe Tuesday, Thursday, and Wednesday. It's deterrent effect, and that's what we're talking about. And then take that resource and move it someplace else where you're having a problem. Not suggesting you don't force the school zones. It's a question of how you choose to do it. The same thing here, all these, this represents a couple thousand car stops, the blue circles, they're not over the red. So the question comes in, are these officers just goofing around? No, they're making car stops where their perception something's happening. The reality is, if you move the car stops, the traffic context to where the crash direction are, how much more of an impact would you have? And that's what this is about. We talk a lot about car stops. We're going to talk about traffic engagement in a minute. But to focus on car stops for a second, traffic enforcement. It has two, has five benefits. The first one is a general deterrence. You see me pulled over to the curb, you see a police officer, you don't speed, you don't run the red light. The specific deterrent is very simply, I'm the one getting a ticket, I'm not going to do that again. It's the same thing with criminal. If you're a criminal, going to go create a burglar or something, and you see me being pulled over and being handcuffed, you're going to go someplace else to do that. The specific deterrent is I'm getting handcuffed and I'm not going to commit that crime. The last one is intelligence. And this is the one that's, to me, is the most important. Okay, you don't need a warrant to stop a car. You don't need a warrant to ask for driver's license. Okay, there's a source of intelligence that's, I'm at four o'clock in the morning, I'm coming out of a roadside, and you know that I'm from New Jersey, I am not supposed to be right, you have nothing else. It's a, it's a starting point to solve crimes. Now, with that said, the purpose of traffic enforcement. It is not punishment. It is supposed to be, it tends to be, a method in which you change a driver's behavior. If I'm speeding up teasingly, the road is right. If I'm speeding on this road for five years and nobody ever stopped me, instead of stop going ninety miles an hour, I'm just going to keep going ninety miles an hour. One of y'all just stops me and said, listen, we have a lot of crashes, you have to stop, slow down. Thank you so much. You've corrected my behavior. Now, again, some people need to get fifteen, twenty-two tickets and get arrested in a court pound, because they just keep doing it over and over again. That is not the overwhelming majority of people. The overwhelming majority of the public will comply with saying you need to slow down. The three keys of traffic, very simply is education. Educated, I'm sorry, engineering, it's taking new issues, is it potholes, is it traffic signals? Is the road too small as it is a sixty miles an hour on a curve, whatever have you? The second one is education. And that is the police officers, as well as the public. Educate the police officers what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how they should be doing it, or how they shouldn't be doing in some cases. And educate the public to say, you can't speed or have crashes, people are dying, whatever have you. Yeah, I think somebody said five fatal crashes in current, on thirty-five so far this year. Okay. Okay, so you have five fatal crashes. That is an enormous amount of crashes in a small town. So there's clearly a problem. Now, is it everybody speeding? That that problem is a national problem through pandemic, speaker related crashes, fatalities are going up. But the last one is enforcement, the three, the third is enforcement. But it's not the first one. It's the third one. It's the last one. It's engineering, education, and then the enforcement part comes in. George Kelling, he, if you've ever made with a Nancy Patrol experiment nineteen seventy-two, he was the author of that patrol experiment. He was working in Philadelphia. He said, it's to provide public safety. Again, it's not punishment. It's not retaliation. It's not a money making proposition. It's it's change, change the public's behavior so they drive and do not create crashes. So let's talk about data driven approaches, the D-Dax model. Okay, that's what they were here to talk about. That was all the things that leaded to a data driven approach. Premise of the model is very simply this. It's about engagement. One of the premises, they kind of started to get lost, it just came online, two thousand and ten, did you ever take? Was it was heavily on traffic in context, traffic enforcement. It's still about pointiness. But what started to get lost and it wasn't changed, but it's now, it's kind of in the forefront, it's about community, it's about engagement. It's about getting community to help, the partnerships. I ask every police department, every chief I've ever met, do you have all the police you need? No. Are you going to get a huge increase of police? No. Can you get a huge budget increase? No. So the only thing left to do is what? To figure out how, again, non law enforcement solutions, because everybody's budget is suffering. Back in two thousand nine in New Jersey, we had a thousand police officers laid off in the state of New Jersey. We lost twenty-five percent of our sworn staff. We lost our county, our dispatcher, county radio, we lost our records clerks. It was a bloodbath in New Jersey. But you had to figure out how to survive that, and we got through it. But this model is very simply, it's about high levels of both crime and traffic problems. It is the only model, the only policing strategy that puts crime and crashes together. It doesn't replace community policing, it doesn't replace evidence based policing, it puts the two together. And it's efficient and effective way. I talk police departments all the time. It's not about they're doing something wrong for the last thirty years. It's about they're not getting the result that they want. How can you do something, add something, or put something else to? It's an operational model. Okay, it's about how to effectively and efficiently deploy the resources. It's a holistic approach. I always say to departments, if the chief, if it's legal, moral, and ethical, and the chief says, okay, and it's not a budgetary issue, nothing should be off the table. But the residents of Corinth one may not be the same things that Mount Laurel is, where I'm from. May not be what Dallas needs or El Paso needs. It's what theirs residents want to need. So to give you an idea of what it is, it's a place based solution. It's not a question of, for the last thirty years, you put a cop here. It's not about new chiefs in town, so I have new idea. It's not about the old chief's been here for fifty-two years, and we've always been this way since the town was founded. It's a place based, it's not a person based, it's a place based. It's a place-based. I had a district attorney in Kansas City, Kansas asked me one time, he says, give me something I can use. And I said, very simply, D-Dax model is this, it's race-based, it's race-neutral, it's gender-neutral, it's ethnicity-neutral, it's socio-economic neutral. The chief doesn't say where's all the white people, purple people, black people, whatever. Where's the crime and where the social harms happening at and that's where we put our resources at. But more important, you tell the community why you're putting resources there. And don't do it with DPS, did you go to South Dallas, roll indeed? Get a lot of arrests and crime, but then have to leave because it was such a backlash. They went to the same thing in Love it. And they told the community we're coming, the chief said that this is why we're doing it, we have a lot of fatal crashes and it went over great. So it's a question of how you deliver it. Data-driven strategies, it's problem-solving, it's problem-oriented policing, it's predictive policing. It's not using algorithms, it's simply looking at your crime and going, okay, here's where things are happening at. Over the last three or five years, we've spent fifteen, twenty, thirty percent of our time here. And it's an evidence-based strategy. Evidence-based means it can be replicated, you can take the model here and you can put it someplace else and replicate that model. It's a scientific approach. It's not a best guess, it's not a person-based, it's nothing, it's simply your data says do this. And you can use that same strategy and evidence-based solution someplace else. So what is the model? Principle one is outcomes. You have to know the outcomes before you can sit there and figure out what it is you want to attack. If your outcome is going to be to reduce fatal crashes on thirty-five. Well, DOT is going to be involved, I'm sure DPS is going to be involved, engineer is going to be involved, that's a counter-state highway. If the problem is when, I don't know if this is a county, is F M S County Road? The foreign markets, county road or correct?
Foreign market is state.
State, okay, so it's going to be who that particular problem is going to be. The first thing though is data collection. You need to collect the right data. And that starts with nine-one-one, what's your emergency? It continues with the officer's report, it continues with the supervisor. And if it's a crash report, it goes to the city engineer, county engineer, whoever does that. If it's a criminal act, that's something different, it's the DA's office and so forth. The data analysis. You have to have somebody to even look at the data. And tell the officers, this is where we're going to go and this is why we're going to go there. But there, I think one of the most important ones is partners and stakeholders. This is the community part. This is the clergy, this is the business, this is the HOAs, this is whoever it's going to be. The elected officials are a huge part of this, city managers, everybody, department of corrections. Anybody who can help you with that particular problem, public works, fire department. It's about force multipliers, it's about getting more sets of eyes out. To report back information that the department can then deploy their resources more effectively. Partners and stakeholders is internal and external. We always lose sight of the most important partner and stakeholder in any police department is the police department. Or the officers themselves. So strategic operations is when you take all these components and you put them out. And this is how you're going to deploy your resource, this is how you're going to do your community outreach, this is how you're going to reach out to your businesses. And the next one is going to be information sharing. This is not intended to be top secret, it is intended to be, we're having a speeding problem out here. Next Friday, the police department is going to be writing, doing traffic enforcement out here. What will that do? You know, don't speed through the intersection because if so, the police are going to be there, it's a deterrent effect. It's not meant to be, let's sneak up and catch them, it's supposed to be, if they're not doing it, you deter the problem, deterrence is in fact an outcome. And the last one is obviously monitor adjusting. This is not intended to be, chief's got three years, two days entire. And we're going to start this and we're going to look at it again in three years, three days. It's a continual process. Is it working? If it's not working, where do we go from there? One of the biggest differences between. The old D-Dax, that might, the manual I have in front of you just came out, it was literally just published last week, officially published last week. The difference is you will not find a word enforcement in that, in that manual at all. It does not exist that manual, it exists now, it's his engagement. It was never, the model was never intended to be enforcement. The model was always about all seven components working together. And in probably twenty nineteen, fall of twenty nineteen, we started working on addressing some of the issues that had come out of the last couple of years. And obviously when last spring happened, it became even more important. So strategic operations. We always think about police and contacts. Give you some ideas. Officers getting out doing business checks, walk-in talks of pedestrians, businesses. Homeless outreach, this actually came out recently. I asked an officer, where the, where the best source of information is in this community? He said, the homeless people. Everybody started laughing. And when you know something, he says, no, he says, they know everything's going on and honestly, people just tend to walk past them and act like they're not even there. He says, and we, I've gotten so much information out of the homeless folks. I mean, you know, it's pretty, that's actually a pretty telling statement. Crime prevention, neighborhood watch, interactions, community, school, K nine presentations, oh yeah. These, and then motor vehicle contacts. These are important, the contacts are important, motor vehicle enforcement is important. It is not the end-to-end all. Especially in today's environment, this proportion of policing allegations and so forth. The road that comes through from Deton to Louisville. You know, it's very transient road, I'm sure. Okay, so why are you doing what you're doing there? Obviously you have five fatalities in the road. That's an easy one, but when your fatalities happen, when is the crashes happening? We talk a lot about looking at all crashes, not just killed and serious injuries crashes. Very simply this, if I'm driving down the road. And I have a seatbelt on, you run the, the traffic signal and hit my car. I'm not injured, it's not a serious injury crash, so it really doesn't get recorded too much. Same thing, I'm driving down a road, I don't have a seatbelt on, you run the traffic signal, hit me, I hit the A post of the car. I have a head injury, now it's a serious injury crash. The cause of the crashes is the same, you ran a red light. The outcome, so if you're looking at simply the outcome, you're not looking at what's causing the crashes, if it starts to become an issue. And that's where the difference between it comes in now. It's the same thing with different things. Meet the community, the zones, tell them why you're there, ask them what they want, ask them what the community wants in that area. More times than not, the most crime-ridden addresses, the most crime-ridden neighborhoods in this country, they will say speeding and loud noise. Oh yeah, and drive-by shooting, but speeding and loud noise. And, you know, the street robbers, speeding and loud noise. Ask them what they want. We're talking about traffic violations that are causing the problems. You hear a lot about, I call them regulatory stops, driver's license, registration, dollar registration, insurance, things like that. I'm not suggesting not important. But if you're talking about reducing crashes. You need to attack the causal factors of the crashes. It's not supposed to be the blanket, that's why it's not very moves and the shotgun approach. Gathering drivers' information. Least, least, sorry, least worst action oriented, verbal warnings and written ones, we had this conversation yesterday. And I think Corinth, I'm not sure the others, no Corinth city, right, everything is a written warning or a written, something documented. Explain why the activities happening. Longview, Paralan, Allen, they all have like fan handouts, flyers, they'll give them car stops, so this is our D-Nice model, this is what we're doing. This is what the model is and this is why we're here and they handed out on car stops, they put them in police stations and so forth. It gets the information out there. Why D-Dax, you can't see the head and D-Dax versus twenty-first century policing. President Obama's tenure, they had a twenty-first century task force on policing. And this model, long before that task force. Those recommendations came right into the model. Transparency and accountability, that's information sharing. We're talking involving community, that's partners and stakeholders. You talk about aggressive strategies, I always say, if you have to tell an officer, you can't jump out the car and stop beating on somebody for no reason. I don't want to say. Okay, it should never be happening and again, that's the task force on twenty-first century policing. Collaborative community members, same thing, partners and stakeholders, collecting, maintaining demographic data, that's data collection. We talk about predetermined number of tickets, you can't tell anybody to write X amount of tickets or else. It is against case law, you will get arrested, in New Jersey, there's a police, there's a police, you can go to jail. Because he put an email to those officers, you have to write X amount of tickets. That's against state law. And the last one is this technology. A department can always use more technology. GIS in the cars allows things, I know Corinth is talking about having the electronic ticket writers, how much easier it makes things, how much quicker, how much data you get to collect. But the bottom line is, that twenty-first century policing model or task force basically laid out the D-Dax model. So why D-Dax in a nutshell? Crashes are clear, crashes and crime are clear, pros plus somebody. If you look at town, no matter how small and say all their crashes are here, all their crime is here. I would tell them that D-Dax model is not for them. But I would also tell them out of the eight hundred and fifty-something police departments around the country, you'd be the only one. We talk about social harms involved motor vehicles. How many times you see somebody walking down a street with a stolen TV and a lawnmower? They're in a car. Happens occasionally apparently because somebody said, well, you had that recently. They call them drive-by shootings for a reason, it involves a car. Okay, we're a very mobile society. We talk about crashes is significant drain, you'll see something in a minute here, I think we used five hundred crashes as a benchmark yesterday. And very simply, if you reduce your crashes by ten percent, that's about two hours, two man-hours. Per crash, nine-one-one's your emergency till town reports submitted, sometimes it's more, but it's at least about an average two man-hours. If you took five hundred crashes and do some ten percent. That police department pick up a hundred man-hours without hiring a person, without a second of overtime. By simply reducing crashes. Same thing with vehicle burglaries, whatever other social harm you have. It's a significant drain. Vehicle stops, we talked about valuable intelligence and the last one is increasing demands of limited resources. The state and federal government keep putting more and more unfunded managers on police officers and police departments. If we can't because of financial restrictions, we can't give them more money or more resources, the only way to do it is to come up with some other solutions. And that's where the communities, that's where technology and so forth comes in. You know, idea of Texas, this is a map of everywhere I've been in Texas. The last five years. Up in, up in the metroplex, Allen is doing it, within Arlington, Richfield Hills, Weatherford, Keller, Azalee, Louisville, last year was at Louisville. All the way east Texas down the border, all the way to El Paso and Amarillo. So we've been all around the state of Texas. Tech Stop, DOT is really pushing this model because they believe in it so much. They even went so far as the step grants, the select traffic enforcement grants. They changed, it used to be you had to write two and a half tickets per hour. They've changed it so you don't have to write tickets anymore. But you have to do your car stops, your traffic context in the areas where your data says you're having a crashing problem. Because they recognize the fact that it became a simple exercise in writing tickets. And you would, we see, we go on a state, we ask some officers, when you stop a car on a step grant, do you even run the driver's license? And the answer is no. It's thirty seconds in the window, four minutes to write the ticket, next car. And it was simply writing paper and Tech Stop said, this is not, this is not working, we write ten thousands, thousands, thousands of tickets a year. It's not reducing crashes, let's try something else. And they actually implemented in all intents and purposes, the D-Dax model. With commercial motor vehicle grants, passenger vehicle grants, click a ticket grants, DUI, drunk driving grants, it all bases upon. Your data and where your data tells you to go. Just to give you an idea that the program itself, it's a workshop, it's an eight-hour workshop, it's free, it's onsite technical assistance, it's free. And it's remote technical assistance, we're still working on police departments that we work with. January, February of twenty sixteen, we just recently reached out and said, hey, can you help us with whatever it is? And I for, I am very fortunate to have some really smart people work with me that I can say, hey, how to do this and they will help those agencies out. One of the things we realized early on is the issue and the big gap was analyst training. Or in many cases, the lack of analysts. So we talked about multiple-part virtual trainings, there's two-day in-service train, out-of-day in-person training. That the grant allows to actually pay the, the travel and so forth for a couple of the folks from Corinth and. I'm saying, you want to see Sweetwater, Hickory Creek, I'm sorry, came down to Harris County last week to do a data-driven decision-making class that we put on. And we pay for the hotels and the per diem. So Tech Stop is clearly invested in this whole process. So just to give you an idea, very simple to close out. A map, a GIS map is very simply, you have streets, you have a map of why your streets. And on that map, you put car break-ins, car stops, shoplifting, whatever have you. This happens to be Allen, I asked him to make this up for me. I said, put all of your crime on a map. And that's what it looks like for three years, this big red dot. So just look at this map, you put all your officers right here. Until you take shoplifting out. And then these start to come into play from the bottom. And he started to refine a little more, now they took off shoplifting, now they're going to take off everything except for robbery, vehicle theft and burglaries. And they stayed pretty much the same, the red dots stayed pretty much the same, so now they're onto something. So that's your three focus crimes, your three social harms. And look at crashes. See the symbols are where all the crashes are, the bigger the symbol, more crashes. Now you overlay your crime on top of that and you see the top and the middle is where their D-Dax zones are. That's where the crashes, the crime repair. The next thing you do is put your officer activity onto that. But this happened just to be car stops. But engagement, it could be demonstrations, it could be. Public announcements, it could be canine demonstrations, it could be whatever you put in the D-Dax zone. You put that officer activity there and this is why you can't, sorry. You can't see this, but they put all their officers here and here and that's why they had eighteen percent reduction in traffic crashes the first six months here. That's sixty-one percent increase in arrests. Because they put their officers where the activity was happening. Give you some ideas, Philadelphia, we just recently saw Robert Harris County, like happened, Harris County is now the largest in the country. Hasn't been a D-Dax model, but Philadelphia is the largest manpower-wise. Cleveland, Longview, Allen, Paralan, Amarillo, Westaco, just a couple of them. Weatherford. They started, Chief, Martin came in, he said, okay, we're going to have enforced activities. These are three D-Dax zones. Three bars in the right. Forty-three percent increase, twenty-five and twenty-two. That resulted in seventeen percent reduction in crashes. Eight percent reduction in crashes, two percent increase, it also affected citywide. So they reduced by doing more car stops, more traffic contacts, more self-initiated stuff, they reduced that one zone seventy percent of crashes. Their crime, their car break-ins, seventy-one percent reduction in car break-ins. By putting their officers where their data said to be. It wasn't that the officers were screwing around before that, it was they thought they were doing the right thing and now their data says they'll hear. It's the same thing with Cleveland. You see the trend line goes down over the five-year period. They had a twenty percent, twenty-one percent reduction, twenty percent reduction, nine percent reduction, fourteen percent reduction. It consistently, consistently went down. Their crashes went down overall fourteen percent to five-year average by doing nine percent more car stops. For traffic contacts, not tickets, contacts. And I keep emphasizing workshops because it's important because I said to one department, I said, you don't have to write tickets on staff anymore. This is not about writing tickets, it's about making contacts. The chief said, that's, I really appreciate that, but do me a favor, can you just explain it because they think they don't have to do anything right now? It's not a question of that, it's a question of, the model is not about running tickets, the model is about making contacts, getting people to change their driving behaviors. Same thing with Allen, to give you an idea, again, eighteen point six percent reduction. They had a sixty-one percent, sixty-one percent increase, sixty-nine percent increase in arrests. And put in your offices where they need to be. They also though had a ninety percent increase in theft-related crimes, increase. And one of the deputy chiefs works with us and he said, they're about, about lost their minds until they realized. That they were generating, they were arresting people for crime and they were generating statistics for crime. They didn't have more crime, they were finding more crime. They didn't have more shop, but they were catching more shoplifters. Longview went from four hundred and something drug arrests, eleven hundred and something drug arrests in four years. And again, everybody said, oh my God, we have this huge drug problem, they always had it, but we're just catching more of it. So the faculty were interdicting it, they were driving their stats up, which is a good thing, that's a good stat to go up. We talked about regional approach a lot this morning, first afternoon with this. This happens to be Tarrant County or Jeff Travis County, they often ask, this is I-35 and clearly nobody can drive I-35. Is it suddenly start driving normally when you go into Williamson County? No, you're going to drive like an idiot in Travis County, you're going to drive like an idiot in Williamson County. So the question is, it goes back to Hickory Creek and Corinth. Is anybody, do they stop or start driving or behaving because we're going into one town and not another, the obvious answer is no. So we talk about D-Dax and step traps, like the traffic enforcement board for Tech Stop. Now, Tech Stop is actually allowing departments now to use their DUI and use our click-a-ticket monies. To put them in their D-Dax zones where the crashes and the crime repair. This happens in Cabal County. This is the I-35, which is in a construction, which apparently got a construction, the sunburned itself out. But you'll hear in the gray, we said, take the gray area, would it be a crime and crashes on? Take the gray area, which is what they came under step zones, put in here and here, the crime and the crash to save here. But the question of using that free money. To have, allocate more resources to where and when you need them. And last but not least, cost of a crash. Several years ago, three or four years ago now, we started looking at things and what's the cost of a crash? As a police commander, director, and acting chief and so, I would look at things and go, okay, well, I have a thousand crashes, two officers. Ten dollars an hour times two officers times, I need X amount of dollars per handle crashes. But what else is impacted by crashes? Chief, do you go to crashes? So they reduce crashes. Does that impact you, crashes? The five fatal crashes, all serious crashes, it impacts the fire department, impacts public works. I've become very fond of saying, but Whataburger, you know, have Whataburger east of Mississippi, so I have to get Whataburger at least once every trip as you can see. However, eleven-thirty in the morning, if you have a crash out front of a Whataburger and nobody can get into that. What is the financial impact of Whataburger? They've lost all that business, if you're a time clock employee and you can't get to your job to punch in. They've lost all that business, if you're a time clock employee and you can't get to your job to punch in, you've lost that money, you've lost that productivity. There's a more of a cost impact than just the police impact or just fire. For instance, this is Lake Worth. And this is, this is a true report, Lake Worth in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, reported four ninety two crashes. They said a thousand eight thirty eight officers. For total of eleven hundred thirty seven day hours. It doesn't sound a lot, if you look at the size of Lake Worth, it's about the size of current, I believe it is, or give or take. Out of that cost, that town, that department, seventy eight thousand dollars to catch more crashes. You get down the size of Lake Worth, seventy eight thousand dollars is pretty significant. They lost three quarters of full time officers simply handling crashes. They ask yourself, that doesn't sound like a big deal, until you look at this. Using their numbers. The time they took handling crashes. They missed out on making three hundred eleven car stops, which for those records would have equated to about ninety seven arrests. So you ask yourself, the ninety seven arrests they did not make, what were they for? Was it a homicide suspect, was it a traffic war, what was it, you don't know because didn't stop it. But ninety seven people, an estimate, did not get arrested, but it could have been arrested if they weren't handling crashes. So you look at they're making, excuse me, basically one arrest every three point two motor vehicle stops. It's generally, that's a little low, it's generally higher than that. The number of arrests. It's generally two or three for every seven day car stops. They look at the impact outside the police department. In this town, crashes in Lake Worth, which is about the same size of her. They lost three hundred and forty three hours or fourteen point three delays of motors in that town. Think about it, it's like fourteen days of delays with traffic crashes, which cost them seventy eight thousand in police, forty one thousand fire and nine thousand seven hundred citizens. Because every crash has an impact, the family of four, twenty six fourteen per resident, every man, woman and child. Exited by twenty six thousand fourteen cents, or in this case, two hundred sixty three dollars. The point is very simply this, if you reduce your crashes. You have more resources, you have, they don't do more proactive things. Businesses don't suffer because of the crashes and losing business. And most of all, for every seven car stops, it's just saying you reduce by one crash. Every seven motor vehicle stops, you reduce your crashes by one. So in this particular case, they do two and a half stops per crash. If they get up to seven, they will reduce their crashes one by one, one by one by one. That's how much a crash impacts a community, not just the the police department, not just the fire department. Wouldn't have to take your questions, I haven't bored you all, cheers. Yes, sir.
Given the situation across the nation right now. Part of it is a lot of officers have left the profession.
Yes, sir.
It's getting harder to recruit new officers given the current situation. In relation to your presentation over reduction. Lose man hours and all these crashes, you seeing the role for uh. Organization like citizens on patrol.
I see a role in everybody playing a role in it, not just citizens on patrol, but to clear that. Um, we have police assistant, police academies, we have seen programs with senior citizens, um, Keller. Yeah, V I P, I was always stuck in mind, um, volunteers, volunteers, something.
Volunteers and police.
Thank you.
They would actually, they had all the data. So they would.
But I also see one, uh, further your question, I also see a role for public works, fire department, parks recreations, HOAs, clergy, whoever has a set of eyes. The the key is to get that information to people, whoever that person or people are going to be and tell them what you need to look for. I'm, you know, I think to see something, say something is a great slogan. But I guarantee if I asked the seven, eight people in a row, the same question about the same fact pattern, you'd get probably seven different versions of what seems suspicious versus what doesn't. I had a person in a airport, the ticket agent said, having a guy drop a duffel bag on a counter, plug it and leave, wasn't suspicious, I'm like, you're kidding me, right? She said, what's the big deal, like, seriously, well, I'll just stand behind you because I think it's pretty suspicious, but see something, say something, yes.
Reason I brought that up was uh, Hickory Creek reached out to citizens on patrol.
Okay.
They had marked vehicles that stated. Patrol had a light bar with no mark. But I used to go, I did that for a number of years, years, I used to go with a partner in those notorious intersections. Hickory Creek, the people used to come down over the hills and there's a three way stop sign. Notorious, it coming over the hill speeding. Just slowing down a little bit for the stop sign. We used to park a position ourselves at the bottom of the hills. And we could see the intersection. Sitting, listening to music and watch people come over the hill and get whiplash as they stop something as they saw.
They crashed watching you, right?
It was just the visibility and we'd go through neighborhoods, the same thing, people. You think didn't do things because they saw the rule which were there.
I don't think anybody, this is my personal opinion, if you see a a marked car with lights. Do you know it's Hickory Creek, do you know it's Corinth, you know it's state police? You just see a marked police officer and then therefore it's it's a police officer going through there. The only downside that as I see it, it's just my personal opinion to having citizens out there, it becomes a liability depending what that person's doing. And I think that's an important distinction to make. I I've seen some programs where quite honestly, some of the folks, they really got involved in things they should not have been involved in. Um, I've seen some of the programs where they put them on the police radio and they would just talk over the police. So I I think I will, I've also seen some very, very well managed, it had been very well received and very um responsive programs as well, so yes. The long answer to your short question is that, yes, sir.
Do you think the strong correlation between crashes and crime is due to uh population density in those areas or? Or is there another reason?
It it certainly doesn't.
I've never heard of such a thing, so I'm trying to wrap my my mind around.
Density certainly plays into crashes, I mean, New Jersey, as we said, we just drive through, hit something, change directions. Um, so density has something to do with that for sure. Um, however, if you think about it, the people that drive like. Not good. Do they have driver's licenses, you have, do they drive like that people, they're also going to commit crimes. So there's a correlation between where people commit crimes and where people drive like idiots. Um, you can't sit there and say it's it's one to one, but it's certainly a correlation, but density certainly plays into it. Um, I have no doubt without looking at traffic count numbers that I thirty five. Has every bit to do with density, but it also has to do with people going ninety five miles an hour. Down the road, changing lanes like they did to me coming here, they just scared the hell out of me coming here. I think this guy came like four lanes back and forth like three times in a quarter mile, like dude, pick a lane, stick with it. Sir.
So in a in an area like the lake cities and and as we look at things together. How do we work to put that data to where we get inferences that apply to us as a joint community rather than? Hickory Creek has numbers, Lake Dallas has numbers, Sandy Show's has numbers. Excluding interstate, because I think that's a bigger issue for us because we're fly through uh communities. And that might need to have text that Detton County, et cetera, to to talk about that, but on the other things. How do we put that data together in a predictive model rather than silo data?
Well, let me just back up one second before we miss having a, there's a model called predictive policing. That's got a lot of heat, um, Los Angeles, Los Angeles, Chicago, Los Angeles specifically, um, has got a lot of heat over predictive policing. If that's using person based information and that's kind of the the pushback for that. Is this predictive element, it's yes or it is, but it's not predictive policing, I just wanted to clarify that. To answer your question about um the four lake cities, it's easy because you guys are all on the same records management system, the same dispatch center. All your information is the same place. Uh, we were laughing about, they said at one point several years ago, they didn't realize where town started, what town stopped, that I do now, obviously, but. Um, it was somewhat tongue in cheek, but the fact is you already had that system in place. Um, I forget, I think it was captain from current yesterday was talking about, we really kind of do this now, like they all work together, they back each other up and so forth. You're already really doing it, it's not really codified, um, we had some conversations about an analyst position or person. Um, you have the crime, the call volume and the manpower to justify one full time analyst. No one police department does, but certainly for you, you're getting pretty close to that, to having that ability. Not only do they do in crime and traffic analysis, they're doing administrative analysis for the police departments. Um, there's a figure about ten percent is for administrative, which means um they're going to do the budget for next year. How do you justify, I need ten thousand more bullets because this, this and this. There's all sorts of analysis, if you have data, you can do an analysis on it. I guarantee the chief, I even asked the fire chief, there's analysis they're doing and how many miles in the trucks, when the trucks are going to be amortized. When the ladder has to be serviced and go out and so forth, everything's based on that. You have the systems in place already, the backend or many departments don't have that. You have the ability, it's um, they have to ask for it to get. The data out of the system, um, to put it on a database, to put an access database or Microsoft Excel. That's all you really need to do that, you don't need some high speed, low drag program, it obviously helps, but you don't have to have that. As far as implementing it, um, I can't imagine that Corinth, I don't know the boundaries here, but I can't imagine Corinth, all the problems are here and Hickory Creek or something is all the over there. I can have without looking any and guarantee there's some places, areas that are lining up over top of another. Um, and I give the example back home, state highway seventy three, it went through four towns. Well, it was Marlton, Maple Shade, Mount Laurel, Moorestown, it was the M states. And we would put a car going northbound, they put a car going southbound. And as they're coming out of ours into theirs and out of theirs and ours, it was ours, we were on the same channel. So we weren't draining our resources, they weren't draining their resources. And it was a collaborative effort. And from what I'm told yesterday and what Mike was telling me, the collaborative effort is already there, so that's generally was the hard part to get police departments to play nice together. That clearly is not a problem here, so you're ahead of curve and Alan.
And my follow up question is, how do you make sure that your data is not lagging data, it's always it potentially behind? Because you need a certain amount of time to collect data and then make analysis on that data, but. The situation might be more fluid and it's changing, how do you make sure that, you know, you're not reacting to a problem that's already been taken care of?
That's a good question, it's a good, it's a significant problem and a lot of departments have that, um, and it comes down to timely data, timely um. Complete and accurate data. Okay, but those throughout those three things, you can't do anything. Um, there was department Texas that their process literally took them three to four weeks to get a report through the system. And I said to them after listening to the organ, I said, you're not doing hotspot policing, you're barely doing warm spot policing. Because by the time you get the information, it's cold spot, they're doing it someplace else now. The the. Responsibilities obviously in the line of officers and supervisors and obviously the command staff to make sure it doesn't happen. The good news for an area like this is you don't have, you know, hundreds of calls a week. So it's much more manageable to say that we had two brother is here, so they're not in a system you need to do it. That really comes down to the command staff, police department to make sure it happens. And in your case, Denton County gets the information in because, you know, sometimes county radios and county dispatches. Everybody has to run FIFTM and it comes to be a problem sometimes. And I say that from personal experience back home. Can I answer your question? Yes. Anybody else?
I'll ask one more question if you don't mind.
Sure.
Reading through your guide, gave me lots of good ideas.
That's good or bad.
Examples that you use for investigative data is license plate readers, L P R data. A shame on me for not knowing the answer to this question already, but I don't know if any of our H C's are using L P Rs. I, something that I learned just recently with Chief Al over at Highland Park I S D. He parks uh in unmanned vehicle in intersections near his high school on certain days and certain times. Just to collect data, looking for kids that have, that are not supposed to be on campus, you know, students licensed place. But with the national registry that comes along with the L P Rs, the the data that you can collect just by having that on the front bumper of a vehicle as it's driving around. And the crime, in his opinion, and the the arrest that he's made because of that tool has paid for the the cost of the technology.
Yes.
Is that your opinion as well?
Yes, no, sort of and kind of.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you're talking about when you say national database, I'm not familiar with the national database.
So the registry that whenever it scans out the registry of all of the sex offenders, all of the felons, anybody that's wanted.
It depends on what you put in it.
And it tells you, it pings, sends you an alert on your radio if.
It depends on what you put in it. You can have it, you download databases and you you get to select what database you want to download. You can do the national sex registry, you can do um department, you can do parolees, you can do um terrorist watch list, you can do whatever you want to. It's generally for your state. Now, more because it costs faith, because you're not near necessarily a state border, this area just made this to choose to pick Texas, I don't know what they're going to pick. Like we were in New Jersey, so we were close to Delaware, Pennsylvania, New York, so we put up all all four states. So it really depends where you're at, so with that said. Do I think L P R license plate readers are good, I think they're amazing tool. I think it's the best that ever happened to policing. Because it allows you to collect data, as you mentioned in that from the I S D, of people who were on campus that shouldn't have been there. Um, but again, we go back to. Are you stopping people for no registration, no insurance? Or are you stopping people for issues that are causing crashes? If you're talking about collecting information, collecting data, there's nothing, there's very few things that are better. There's towns in around the country, like um, there's a town on the Jersey shore, you can't, literally cannot get on the island. Without going through a license plate reader, there's four entrances on the, on one off that you can't get on or off it without it, so. They get to solve crimes real quick because they know when somebody stole something, they're going to pass a radar camera, a license plate reader. Okay, so it's a really good intelligence gathering tool, yes, um, do you get one of people, yes, we, the first one I got about Macanalora. We were getting criminal arrests left and right, stolen cars left and right. Um, but yes, it's, but the they go to the same point, there's a, there is a national registry for um repos. Um, repossessing car repossessions, they have them and there is a national database that the police departments have tapped into and they've gotten their data to solve crimes. It's more of a criminal. Issue than a traffic issue, I guess that's a better way to put it.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all. Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our workshop session, now we'll go into the business agenda. At this time, uh, Mr. Hart will give us a uh brief overview of what uh. The uh. Strategic plan is for the broadband.
Thank you very much, I'll probably leave it back here.
We're going to just come back and uh and and really do a follow up with the report that Ian's already provided. This is the one area where we're asking you to take action tonight. To adopt the strategic plan that Connected Nation uh prepared uh about twelve months ago now. Uh, the uh. The the important point here obviously is is the vision was to to have sufficient broadband. Uh, in the area and and then our favorite line was that where no citizen is left offline. Uh, so uh, that's where we're working there. Uh, some of the initial questions that we were dealing with is to have a a good understanding. About the infrastructure that that's that's in the in the four communities. And so Connected Nation was able to collect that data. Uh, and and to collect it, so by having them here, and Ian's already covered that, I think, I think very well. Uh, the uh, the goals and the action items, I think, were were some of the key areas where we began the work. Uh, talked about, uh, we have been working with the incumbent providers uh that that's been there. Uh, looking about how we move forward in that area, and so that's that's uh particularly important. Looking at the uh uh infrastructure funding opportunities, it's a lot of the reasons for having uh mighty rivers. Uh, 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 working with this, he's also connected with the North Central Texas Council of Governments and has some real good ties. Uh, into the federal government and then we're also looking at some of the uh additional funding. The that is imminent uh on and broadband is one of the options of in that area. Uh, we collected data, a lot of that data was looking at what's actually going on in the homes. That was matched up with the data they collected on the ground to make sure that there was a good correlation there. So there is good data and that's what makes it possible now for us to go ahead and work with mighty rivers and marketplace city, a marketplace dot city. Uh, key findings, again, Ian's covered this one uh quite well in terms of the uh. Uh, households that have that meet the FCC definition of high speed. Uh, but I think one of the uh, one of the key elements here is that uh. Fifty nine uh percent of our respondents are reporting that the current internet service they have does not meet their needs. And so that's really where we're trying to respond. Uh, some of the uh short term goals and objectives. Uh, we've as managers, we've been working with the incumbent providers, it's principally Century Link, Grande and Charter Spectrum. And so we have been meeting with them. Identify, contact and attract potential broadband providers, that's the reason for doing the marketplace dot city. So that's where that's where that's involved and then uh. So that's where, that's where that's involved. And then developing a broadband, broadband education program. We're working with Connected Nation to help us put that together. So we'll be ready to roll that out very soon. Some of the longer term goals. The first one on there is become a digital ready community. Wendy's talked about that tonight. So we're actively engaged in that area. It's interesting is, is on that, we're actually a pilot. Area for that in, in the first in the state of Texas. That's the whole program is put together through Purdue University. Looking at the public private partnerships. Again, that's mighty rivers, market city. Marketplace dot city. We've not done anything right now on telehealth, but looking at on the options. For the libraries, some of that's the emergency broadband. Services and then trying to get some additional resources here. The funding, the development of the dark fiber ring. That's going back to what's going on with some of the treasury guidelines. On, on the use of federal funds of in this area. It's also some help with. Mighty Rivers. And then also working with the school of districts in this, in, in this area. And, and then the other comment is watching on this funding. We'll be meeting with the. The information and technology committee from the National League of Cities. On June the twenty second to get, to help get a little further clarification. On, on the use of some of these funding. So. Again, what Ian talked about, the challenges. Dissatisfaction with the broadband services, a demand for better service and competition. And community involvement. I think we're doing very well in that area. And so that's just a very quick overview of the strategic plan. I know all of you had, had that for a number of months. And so what we're asking you to do and the recommendation. Is for each of the four councils is, is to. To approve and to adopt. The Lake City's broadband strategic plan as it's been presented to you. Prior and then especially for tonight. So maybe we'll turn it, I can answer questions, but turn it back to you for each of the council's considerations.
Is there any question from any of the council members?
Before we. Do questions, I'd, I'd like to maybe add two caveats to the broadband recommendation and one that, one is, excuse me. That we aim for gigabit speed rather than the FCC minimums. That's yesterday's technology. So we aim for gigabit speeds is one. And then number two, one that we discussed a lot in our committee meetings was a single process for all cities for. So that if someone wants to run fiber in Hickory Creek, it's not a different process to run fiber in Korea. So I'd like to put those two.
Okay. Will that be incorporated in?
Yes.
Are there any other questions?
I do have a question. And I think you kind of alluded to this, Mr. Hart, about. Meeting with the National League of Cities to determine. Funding for the government funding that's coming from each of the cities. My understanding that there may be an issue with using that, those funds for. To provide for the public. It may be restricted to intergovernmental agencies. Did you kind of touch on that a little bit?
The, and we're talking about the, the, the rescue funding that we're all kind of waiting for. In the initial draft treasury guidelines. There, they are saying that those funds cannot be used. In communities or neighborhoods that meet the FCC definition of the twenty six, three. Broadband speed. Now, there are, there's a lot of pushback on that. The treasury has been surprised. At what's, what that, that impact actually means. So we are waiting to see what revision is going to be. Done with treasury. And I think we're going to get our first indication of that on June the twenty second. Now. Let's assume for a minute that it stays. Mighty Rivers is, is starting to lay out some strategies that we could potentially follow. To, so that we could use those to help improve, use those funds to help improve broadband services. Consistent with the treasury guidelines, but we could kind of have a. Backdoor, so to speak, to do that. We're wait, and, and, and right now it's a little bit of a waiting game. To see exactly where those guidelines go. There is some, there's a, there's a significant pushback trying to get them. Up, up those speeds. You, you're Ian's coming a moment ago of having at least a. Minimum of a hundred up, hundred down would make a huge difference of in the lake cities. But that, that, that's what we're waiting on.
Are there any other questions from the councils?
Yeah. One other, just some of the more recent developments. I know that City of Arlington just signed a contract with a company to, to. Put fiber in their neighborhoods and they're going to. Finance, build, design and operate in the city of Arlington for 10 years. What? Do we have the option, or maybe we can ask mighty river this? Do we have the option for the cities to own the quote unquote infrastructure, the pipe? Maybe even just the fiber, no services. Allah, what this other company is doing in Arlington and. They're actually going to then turn around and contract with internet service providers to provide the fire, the, the internet connection to the home. In lieu of putting it through a, a venture capitalist firm. What if, since if the funds get restricted, what if we owned the, the infrastructure, we own the fiber, we own the, the pipe? And then we contracted with or, or an ISP then came in afterward. Would that help our case? And these all things are just happening here in the last week, week and a half.
The, the, the issue that's going on here is, is the source of the fund. So. If we talk about the American Rescue Fund. That we're going to have to be a little bit more creative than a straightforward approach. Probably the what, I'm not familiar with the Arlington case. But there are a number of communities that are using local funds. To do those kinds of services or they're doing some partnership funding. There's something, you're using something other than. The American Rescue Funds. So, so that's one issue that's going on. Second thing that you have is. The legislature just. Created a broadband. Broadband improvement service. I'm not sure the name of it exactly. And so, so we're going to, it's going to take a little time for those guidelines to come out. So that's going to be one. The, the other issue. In, in some of the debate is providing infrastructure funding. Where broadband could be eligible. And then the federal government's also looking at some grants for broadband itself. And. So, so, so there's, there's a lot of moving targets right now. If you go back to the Arlington case, the marketplace city is going to end up being a real good source to help us address that. And they, and they have some good. Success stories coming out of California right now.
That's one of the cities. Fullerton, California is one of the other cities that that company. Has locked up and. But the key there though is. They're using venture capital money and they're, they're, they're providing the infrastructure owning it. And the city is just sitting back. I, I don't want us to just sit back.
Right.
We own the roads, we own the right of ways. And so anything that's going to come in, we're, we're locked in by the legislature. We can't be an ISP. And we can't dictate who runs in our right of way per se. But we could own, just like our utility companies own the pipe, the water pipe. We could potentially own the pipe. That the internet runs on without owning the internet. So we just need to make sure we, we, we explore those avenues as ways around. With the funding and as well as what the legislature has done.
I think, I think the real key point for us is going to be. As we work with marketplace city to, to define. The RFP that they'll use to, to go out. So, so I mean, the managers will be involved in that. The committee will need to come back and bless all of that. And so that's, that's the next step where we're headed. And so, so you're going to have a chance to revisit. Some of those parameters. And more importantly, you're going to get to talk to some folks that understand this way better than, than I do.
Are there any other questions for city manager?
I can ask just a follow up to Mayor Clark's question. Are we hearing that some of this infrastructure is going to be limited to government only? Versus residents? I don't think we got a clear answer.
Okay, I'm sorry. The, uh, under the current treasury guidelines. Those funds can be used to connect government buildings. So that's eligible. Where, where the issue becomes is you cannot use those funds under the current proposed guideline. So let me say current proposed. Then you cannot use it for residential or business use. If their speeds exceed the twenty six, three. Which everything we have in town exceeds that. But that's where the significant pushback is going.
And I would add, not everything exceeds that on the east side of thirty five. Okay. East side. So the Swisher doesn't exceed that. But that's one of the, the, the big clarifications that needs to happen is. What you can use it for, because already there's, there's a lot of money. We, as I mentioned, we fall in a gray area. There's billions of dollars through the USDA being allocated. And the state to upgrade rural communities. But we're not rural enough.
We're, we're not going to meet the definition there, but if you go back and look at, at what's going on. The rural areas that they're talking about generally does not meet the twenty six, three. Speeds. So, so that, that is a significant. And, and when you're talking about that, you're talking about the areas. Yeah, I know at least where I'm familiar is, is up and down, you know, through the Panhandle, the. The mule shoes and the. You know, and the plain views or the, the far wells. And it's, it's going to be those kind of towns that are really struggling.
Yeah. If the rescue plan doesn't address the residences, that's not going to do us any good. Connecting ourselves isn't the issue. It's, it's the households that we're trying to reach. So.
Yes. Council, no, sorry, to your, to your point. So that's kind of the reason why we've, we've engaged mighty river. Because if, if the compass course changes and we can't use that funding. They're going to help us figure out which way we need to go. And so they're going to give us some of those resources and strategies to move forward because. We've been kind of trending this way that we're going to depend on this money. When we started this whole broadband committee, which is going to be at one point, the technology committee, when we started doing a lot of more. Looking into it. It, it could be three sixty from where we're going right now. So. We don't know. I mean, that date that Bob talked about is going to be really, really important. On what we do, because then we may have to restart. And it may be that we as councils and towns. May have to initiate it with some money that we're going to have to set aside in our budgets. And see how important this really is to us. So.
Okay. I just want to keep the focus on the residents.
Right. So right now for this discussion item, this is basically just a strategic plan for what we've been doing. And then if it changes, then we'll, we'll redirect.
It doesn't lock us into either way. We're, we're hoping for the bigger solution. Right. Thank you.
I would also. Wouldn't mind if we could discuss a, a. Public engagement from a state level. You know, whether it's in conjunction with our county representatives. But getting to the legislature, because they're having a lot of discussions about this as well. They've actually since updated their study instead of ninety six percent of Texans having access to internet, it's now eighty eight percent. And as they established this office. We potentially being front out of the gate could help drive the focus of this, this. Office of broadband owner at Austin. So I, I would also like to think that we should, should also. Devote some time to some. State lobbying if, if, if we want to call it that. So that we're first out to the gate.
Yeah, it sounds like this whole thing is accurate data driven. To go back to the previous presentation. As we've found with what we did with Connected Nation. The data didn't really line up with the reality of what we're dealing with. And so we've, we've somehow got to. Clarify that because that eighty eight number is still not even accurate. It's a lot lower than that for effective speed. Thanks.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
It's ironic that you all are talking about the broadband. And we just discussed that on Tuesday and I sat there just as quietly as I could, as long as I could. But we just discussed that on Tuesday about using the, about the broadband. And we appointed Ron Marchant. To work on the broadband and you all can work with him, give him a call. And we can find out some of these things because in the fact sheet that we gave, that we were given. We were told that, you know, these funds could be used for broadband services. For people, underserved people. So I believe they can, but we have our attorneys working on it. So. We will let you know, Ron Marchant is our liaison to work on that. So. I feel sure that we'll be able to use those for undeserved, undeserved areas. So don't get too far away in the weeds about it. Let, let the county help out. With it before you spend all your money trying to find out because we will be working on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. We always appreciate your support.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. At this time, I would like to have the. Current city council make a motion to support the strategic plan that's been presented here tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay. Now have our city secretary come here and call the role for the.
Yes.
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 Okay. It's unanimous. Mayor Clark.
I will entertain a motion on item number six.
Mayor Clark. I'd like to move to approve the adoption of the broadband strategic plan. With addition of the gigabyte speed criteria and a single process for all cities involved as discussed. Mayor Clark with that second, Council McKenney can hear the meeting, but he's not being able to come through and he votes yes as well.
Okay. Okay. So I have a second by Councilman Dupree. So Mr. Kevin, sign your vote.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Mayor Price.
For the city of Lake Dallas council, do we have a motion on item number six?
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the broadband committee recommendations as stated.
Do we have a vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Peabody?
Aye.
Is. On, on behalf of Shady Shores, because the mayor had to drop off, I believe.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion from Shady Shores Council.
I move to approve broadband plan as, as outlined and recommended.
I have a motion and a second. We'll take the roll call vote. Matthew. Can I get you off mute?
Aye.
Thank you, Matthew. Mike?
Aye.
Jack? And I vote aye as well. So it's unanimous here as well. Sorry, we use first names around here, not last names. Sorry.
That's why they're called Shady Shores. Okay. Thank you very much. It's been passed as, as voted on by all the councils. Okay. At this time, we have citizens comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated. By the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before this, brought before them at this time. Are there any comments? Items. I believe we have, do we have anybody at?
Hey guys.
Okay.
Hey, Evan Huff with, actually the city of Lake Dallas live, I've been here since twenty fifteen. This is a, an amazing community. It's, it's an honor to be here. To be trusted, not only on the LCMU board, but also on. You know, a couple of different boards at, in Lake Dallas as well, Community Development Board. I love being here, being able to raise my family. I've also been fortunate enough to actually start a business area recently as well to also start serving a lot of the businesses, residents. Yeah. Businesses and residents here in the Lake Cities area. You know, Chris Gordon's brother and so his wife. Have been fortunate, like I've been fortunate. Um, have been fortunate, like I've been fortunate enough to serve them. Um, and. Actually being a part of the, the broadband committee has actually been extremely eye-opening. Um, I've, I've lived it. I've actually seen a lot of the issues, um, but it really hasn't even come top of mind, uh, or even have seen an opportunity. But we're actually, uh, my company is actually actively working to bring these services here, even apart from what's happening in this room. And literally, we just received a huge shipment of one, one big roll to start out with of conduit. And fiber that we actually, we should be getting the fiber tomorrow, um, to bring gigabit speeds to everyone here in Lake Cities. It, it's where we're starting. Uh, it's in my backyard. I suffer with it just like you guys do. So I'm also partnering with many industry experts. So I've got over fifteen years of experience. Just myself dealing with ISPs, dealing with all sorts of different networks. Um, I'm bringing that. Uh, expertise in along with a, a big team of about twenty-five different people that are bringing in. Anyway, the goal is to activate gigabit speeds before the end of the year, um, to as many places as I can. Obviously, it's going to be a time to roll it out, but. I'm coming. I just want to thank you guys for coming together. It's a, it's a huge blessing for me just to say I'm here and I want to serve the community. Low-cost, high-speed internet that doesn't go down. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online? Bobby? No. Okay, this time we'll give the floor over to uh Ms. Bobby Mitchell, our commissioner, and um, she has a few comments for us.
I'm not going to belabor the time because I was going to talk about broad, broadband and it's ironic that you all are already talking about it. I talked to Ian about it, uh, probably back last year. We talked about uh broadband and not having it in the Lake Cities area. Thank you all again for getting together and working together because working together, we can get something done. But don't forget that the county is here and if you've got a problem with something, uh, let us know and see if we can help you. If we can't, we'll say no. But uh, I just want to thank you. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for the commissioner?
And no, I, no, we have not decided on the bond election yet. I know that's on a lot of y'all's mind. Mike Nails walked in and Councilman Nails walked in and said, Bert, you got my money? I do, we do have the money for Shady Short, Shores Road, the Surface Transportation Block Grant, ten million dollars and uh seven million, seven hundred thousand. The two cities and four million from Dent County. So we have the money ready, even though. We're having to wait to get the construction done and it won't be done to twenty-four. I've been pushing John every day to tell him that we need it quicker than that. So that's what we've been doing, working on that, but. Don't have the money yet. We're talking about it. We have discussed the bond election. We haven't made up our mind about a bond election that we've discussed it, but I'd like to ask you. Especially, well, all the cities here, but especially Lake Dallas and Hickory Creek. To, for you to send me your projects that you would like to have done, if you want something done, if we should do a bond election. I'd like to have those projects and prioritize them and I would probably prioritize them again. So John, you'll make sure you do that. And I'm sure, um. Commissioner Williams would appreciate the same thing from Shady Shores. Um, in Corinth. So we have not, we're all working, looking at redistricting, but we can't do it after the census. So we don't know what we're going to have until the census is over and. Kind of like y'all. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Bobby.
Bobby Ryan's got our list already.
Okay. At this time then, we'll adjourn the meeting. What's that? Okay. So moved.
Aye.
Mayor Price.
Shady Shores will adjourn the meeting with a motion.
Go move.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So done.
Thanks. Thank you for all, all for coming tonight.
All right, Matthew, we left you out of that one.